Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of the Policy Committee Broadcast Online and, as usual, held as a hybrid, councillors here in person and officers, or at least some officers, joining us remotely via the magic box. That's all I have in terms of chairs announcements, so I'll move on to declarations of interest. Do we have any for the open session at least? No. Wonderful. Minutes of the previous meeting, pages five to 10, any comments on those? Great. Can I sign them as a correct record then? Agreed. Great. Petitions and questions. No petitions this evening, no public questions, but one councillor question from councillor McElroy, and that is to the lead councillor for communities and neighbourhoods. So over to councillor McElroy.
Thanks, Chair. Smaller vehicle needed to collect waste from narrow roads. Many times the lorry which collects waste from the grey and red bins has not been able to access some of the narrower roads in Redlands and, I'm sure, across the town. This has meant bins haven't been emptied and caused all sorts of waste-related problems. The food waste collection uses a smaller vehicle and is able to access narrower roads with greater ease. Please, can the lead councillor update me on the results of the council looking into getting a smaller vehicle to use for emptying grey and red bins on narrow roads? Thank you.
Then councillor McElroy, councillor Barnet Ward.
Thank you, Chair. I thank councillor McElroy for his question. I've been in correspondence and held meetings with residents who live on narrow streets where parked cars can prevent access by the refuse collection vehicles. I've also door knocked some of the affected roads on the invitation of ward councillors, so I know how problematic these missed collections are for residents. I've tasked waste management with identifying every road with repeated issues and coming up with potential solutions. Waste management have identified 10 roads out of approximately 1,400 across the borough that have had repeated access issues. These roads do not have problems every week, and some are more regularly affected than others, but they all have the combination of very narrow roadway and on-street parking, which means that a large car parked slightly away from the curb can be enough to prevent our refuse vehicles from accessing the street for collections. Waste management are actively seeking solutions to ensure residents of these 10 roads have the same reliability of service that the council provides to the other roads in the borough. Refuge collection vehicles are of a standard width. The supplier of the council's 26-tonne RCV fleet, Dennis Eagle, do make a smaller 18-tonne vehicle, but whilst it is shorter than our 26-tonne vehicles, it is the same width. Councillor McElroy suggests using food waste-sized vehicles, but they are a very different tool for a very different job. The annual running cost of operating a specialist small 7.5-tonne vehicle, accounting for amortisation of the vehicle, fuel, maintenance and crew, is in the order of £92,000 a year. As the total weight restriction of the food waste vehicles is 7.5 tonnes, they cannot have a device to compact waste. This is not a problem in collecting food waste, as it has a greater bulk density of 500 kilograms per metre squared and higher moisture content than residual waste, which is 189 kilograms per square metre, or recycling, which is 86 kilograms per square metre. Food waste collectors are weekly, using a 23-litre bin, whereas residual waste and recycling are fortnightly collections, predominantly using 140-litre and 240-litre bins respectively. Using the bulk density factors above, this calculates to each household presenting 1.1 kilograms of food weekly at full bin, 17.2 kilograms recycling fortnightly, and 18.9 kilograms of residual waste fortnightly. The number of households the food waste can service per day is approximately 1,800. This is achieved by a technique using a slave bin, so that 20 food bins are emptied into a 240-litre bin before being lifted into the vehicle. The loading cycle time of the lift is 20 seconds with the configuration on the smaller vehicle, as opposed to 10 seconds on a standard RCV, which is significantly more robust, and two bins can be loaded simultaneously with dual lifts. Emptying individual bins with a slow lift would reduce the number of households per day on a normal residual or recycling round to approximately 300 based on lift productivity. However, a compounding factor is that the smaller vehicle without compaction would only be able to take the waste generated by 30 to 40 households at a time. This would entail multiple extra trips to small mead per day, with all the negative environmental, financial and productivity impacts that would entail. For example, Blenheim Gardens is possibly the most frequently affected of the 10 streets we have identified. A food waste-sized vehicle would have to travel to small mead to be emptied at least twice when collecting from Blenheim Road alone, more likely three times when collecting recycling. Taking all these facts into consideration, a food waste-sized vehicle collecting recycling or residual waste could only collect from 150 households a day, making it a highly inefficient model with significant environmental and financial impacts. Additionally, the operator's licence which regulates our vehicle compliance to the Ministry of Transport has classified that the council are currently at full capacity for vehicles at the Bennet Road depot. Therefore, any new vehicle would have to be a replacement and not an addition to the fleet. As a food waste-sized vehicle would be so much less efficient than our standard refuse collection vehicles, we could not justify removing a full-sized RCV from the fleet to accommodate one. We continue to explore other options for the 10 streets, such as sack collections loaded into a tipper vehicle, but this is also not straightforward. Sacks could encourage vermin, would need to be collected weekly, have manual handling issues for the crews, and the same criteria of capacity and additional requirement to make multiple journeys to the tip still prevail. Network management and parking services have been contacted for their input into possible solutions, such as increased patrols for people who are not parked correctly, and changes to parking restrictions, such as restricted parking on a certain day and time to allow access. These options need further investigation, and I will emphasise that no changes to parking restrictions would be made without full consultation with residents. The waste service are aware of the problem in these streets. For the time being, we maintain the current operational procedure, but if access cannot be achieved, the crew will return and make several attempts in the hope that obstructing vehicles have moved. We will continue to endeavour to seek further possible alternative solutions to resolve the situation.
Thank you, councillor Barnet Ward. Councillor McElroy, did you have a supplementary?
Yes, thank you, Chair. What's the timeline for coming up with potential solutions, testing any that are canvassed and implementing anything that's found to cut the mustard?
Councillor Barnet Ward?
Thank you. I'm not imposing an arbitrary timeline on them, it's important that whatever we try is properly bottomed out.
Wonderful, thank you very much. I was going to ask more about the moisture content of different cubic meterages of different types of waste, but I think we'll move on, but thank you very much. We can talk about it later. Item five, decision books, none for review tonight, so on to item six, allocation of the community infrastructure levy, 15% local contribution, or little SIL, as I like to call it, and over to Mr Waringham.
Thank you, Chair. So the report here deals with the community infrastructure levy, or SIL, which is the levy that developers pay towards provision of infrastructure. Specifically, it deals with the 15% of SIL which is required to be spent on infrastructure items in the relevant area where development takes place. The remaining SIL is to be spent on strategic projects, and also 5% to be used to cover administration, and is not covered in this report. The report follows on from the new process for allocation of this 15% local SIL which was agreed at Policy Committee in February last year, with the approval of an amended SIL spend protocol. This process anticipates an annual allocation of 15% local SIL towards local projects, and that takes into account the consultation on local priorities for spend that's undertaken every three or four years and was last undertaken beginning in February last year, as well as the criteria set out in that protocol. In last autumn, all councillors were given an opportunity to nominate projects for 15% local SIL funding that are relevant to their ward. Projects were also nominated by officers, and a form is available on the website to allow members of the public to also nominate projects. There were 42 projects nominated, and the total value of those projects significantly exceeds the amount of 15% local SIL that's available to allocate, which is just over 1.7 million. So this report sets out the projects that have been nominated and assesses them against the agreed criteria from the protocol. It then sets out a proposed allocation of 1.6 million of 15% local SIL funds that has been collected up to the end of 2021, taking that assessment against the criteria into account. The proposed allocation involves a focus on those wards that see the greatest amount of residential development, in particular Abbey, Catesgrove and Whitley, and also focuses on the top priority identified through consultation, which was play areas and open spaces. The committee is recommended to agree the proposed allocation of funds set out in the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Waringham. Can I just firstly thank you, because this is a very big and difficult exercise, and I think you've done an exemplary job of pulling together an awful lot of information here and consolidating it into a very coherent and very comprehensive report, and I'm very grateful for the work that's been put in, and very grateful to all of the councillors and all members of the public who submitted schemes for consideration as well. I'll go to councillor Page.
Thank you, Chair. You've just made the first point I was going to make, that given the deadline of 26 November last year, I'd like to thank Mark and all the other officers that participated in putting together a very comprehensive report, and also the appendices that take each nominated scheme and have done quite a bit of work in some cases where possible, and in other cases obviously identified schemes that will require further work if taken forward. The final point that I would make, just as a headline, is that a number of schemes right at the end, on pages 112 to 119, are flagged as borough-wide and actually came forward from keen officers, and particularly Sam Sheen should be thanked for his ever enthusiastic approach to his area of responsibility, and I think all of the schemes that he has identified are ones that members give a high priority to. It's not an issue of whether they're low or high priority, but it's as to how they should best be funded, which is why we believe that if it is a borough-wide scheme, it clearly should be funded from a pot that is other than the local SIL funding, and should therefore come from big SIL, which is the main 80% pot, or mainstreamed from council capital resources. But obviously, either funding route has its implications, which is why paragraph 4.27 on page 18 has identified a number of schemes besides the ones that I've just referenced that Sam nominated as appropriate for possible funding from other sources. That doesn't mean that they're being parked, they will be coming forward in the future, Chair, once we've had further discussions with Jackie Yates and colleagues about funding options. Turning to the list in front of us, Chair, I'd also like to thank colleagues for their nominated projects, and we have therefore are recommending the list on pages 11 and 12 for taking forward for funding under the local SIL arrangements. It's probably just worth reminding ourselves that the reason we have this strange top-sizing is that, as a result of negotiations in the then Coalition Government, the dear Lib Dems, God bless them, insisted on an element of this going towards their parish councils. Now, many areas of the country have parish councils, we're blessed in not so having. And in many areas of the country, particularly two and three-tier areas, the district or the unitary authority passports the local SIL for the particular parish area to the parish council for them to determine. We don't have a parish arrangement. We initially looked at dividing the town into four areas, north, south, east and west. Rapidly became apparent that little was generated from the north area, because there are no major developments, although, of course, following last week, there could potentially be at least a third of a million available for local SIL dispersment north of the river, and that could be as high as half a million. But that, of course, is dependent on a certain development, which we don't need to debate again this evening, but that's a statement of fact. So the allocations reflect, as the report rightly says, on page 19, paragraph 4.29, the approach directs more than half of the funds towards the three wards where by far the largest amount of development is taking place. And the scheme allocations reflect that, but we have not excluded areas of the town that don't generate much SIL. And I would point to a scheme such as the Palmer Park Green Gym Equipment, and Palmer Park is a facility that benefits far more than Park Ward, it benefits far more than Abbey and Redlands, and could be argued to benefit people outside the borough who don't actually make much contribution towards it. But it's one of those strategic locations in the east of the town that we felt would appropriately benefit from that, along with the other enhancements that we're offering on Palmer Park. Redlands this year also receives two allocations, which we feel are appropriate under the local SIL funding, and I would commend those to colleagues. The rest of the schemes, I think, are fairly self-explanatory. The other point that I would make, and this is important, is that particularly traffic schemes, I evidenced the North Court Avenue speed reduction, and also the Norcat Battle 20 mile an hour zone, cannot be delivered within one financial year, because there's detailed design, there's then consultations, we do informal and then statutory consultations, and if we're going to get it right, it has to take time. And Redlands showed that the activity that we invested in informal and then statutory consultations has by and large paid off, and we're therefore proposing a funding across two years in respect of those schemes, which is why we're clawing forward some of the funding from this financial year. Other schemes can self-evidently be delivered in a shorter timescale, but there will inevitably be resource implications for some parts of the Borough Council, and we'll be looking to work with officers to ensure that the delivery of all these schemes is taken forward as expeditiously as possible, also in consultation with local ward members, and obviously in consultation with local residents. So, Chair, I would, oh, very final point, this is a rolling programme, all the time we are accumulating SIL contributions. This is the second consultation we've had since the introduction of SIL, and there will be a further consultation probably in two years' time, but the challenge will be to deliver this package before we start tripping over ourselves in doing further consultations. But the money will not be lost, it is banked, there isn't a time restriction on having to spend this money by a certain date, unlike with the earlier section 106 payments. So on that basis, Chair, I would commend this report and recommendations to colleagues.
Thank you, councillor Page. A mere seven minutes and 40 seconds, and councillor Hoskin managed to yawn only once during. Councillor White?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be substantially shorter. The, yeah, green councillors think the list of projects to be funded looks good, however, given that there is an underspend on the community infrastructure levy, local contribution pot of money, we think that a few more projects could have been funded, such as the electric vehicle charging, and tackling climate change was the second priority identified. But we don't feel there was a particularly large number of projects directly contributing to that, although many of them indirectly would do. In Park Ward, we think that the better toilets could have been investigated, or anti-idling signage could have been funded with the underspend, or in Redlands, the Upper Redlands Road pedestrian crossing that has been knocking around for a long time and met all of the criteria, that could have been funded. My Green Party colleagues and I will keep working to make sure that every drop of money is spent improving the town, and we'll be voting in favour of the recommended action.
Councillor Mitchell?
Thank you, Chair. Like councillor White, we too will be supporting these, what councillor doesn't wish to see investment coming into their ward. All I would say to councillor Page's point about the other development in north of the river, which we're not going to debate again at length, obviously, is I would appeal to him that ward councillors are fully consulted and involved in the dispersment of the S106 obligations there, should it go ahead. The feeling north of the river is that the Labour administration tends to ignore people there, rightly or wrongly, that's how they feel, and as a result, we want to make sure that there is as much engagement with our ward around that particular development in future. But as for these recommendations this evening, it's a pity that there are no real northern wards represented in this particular set of dispersments, but we appreciate it's a limited pot, and there was competition for these allocations, so we too will be supporting them.
Not so much about competition so much as the fact that heretofore very little development has occurred north of the river, and it's appropriate that the money would follow where development occurs. And if you take Abbey Ward and Whitley Ward together, they form about 75% of the development that's happened in the town during this accounting period. Park Ward accounts for 1.2%, for example, so it's right that that funding would follow where the development happens, because that's what statute law requires it to do. I don't think you're entirely correct in saying that everybody north of the river thinks the Labour administration ignore them, because they have elected some councillors, I think councillor Barnet Ward indicated.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, and that was my idea, the point I was aiming to make through you. Just to remind councillor Mitchell that he doesn't speak for everyone north of the river, and his party doesn't speak for everyone north of the river either. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? No? I'll go to Mr Waringham, in case he had anything to add.
Nothing to add, Chair, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Then I suggest we move to the vote. Those in favour? Wonderful, that is unanimous. Great. Excellent, thank you very much, everyone. Let's move on to item, once we move through the massive pile of papers, item seven, the cremator procurement project delegated authority, and I think Isabel has got home in time to join us. There we go, over to you, Assistant Director.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, councillors. The report this evening sets out approval for delegated authority to enter into a contract with our cremator supplier, and also for approval for capital spend. The report sets out, it's a real step forward actually, for the service, as we've been operating in a process under sort of pandemic conditions, and this is a move forwards to help create a resilient service and implementing best practice, a best practice operating model, and moves away from the temporary arrangements that we have been under for a while. As part of the overarching review and options proposed, looked at rather, we undertook various assessments on what was right for Reading Council at the moment, reviewing best available technology in the context that we are operating in and value for money. So the proposed way forward is for delegated authority for the spend for two cremators and a maintenance contract for the next 15 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Assistant Director. Councillor McEwan?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank officers for this report, and as members will have read, the report aims to seek delegated authority to enter into a contract for the demolition removal of the two cremators, and the supply, installation and maintenance of two new cremators for Reading Crematorium. The report obviously details information regarding the previous contract and the temporary cremator, which is approved in May 2020, and the proposal of the two fully abated cremators will result in an overall improvement to the carbon and environmental impacts of the council, as more energy, efficient and fully abated emissions of mercury and to the air. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McEwan. Anybody else? Wonderful. Just to say quickly, Assistant Director, I mean, we know that it's been a particularly tough two years for officers working at the cemetery and the crematorium, and indeed, I mean, the report indicates some of the technical challenges with that, but we're all aware of other reasons that it's been a very challenging time, and so our gratitude, I think collectively, I have no doubt that all parties would share in that, to those officers who've been working in challenging circumstances. But thank you. Otherwise, let's move to the vote. Those in favour? Wonderful, carried unanimously, thank you. On to item eight, the Berkshire Sensory Consortium Services Contract. I have Kate Graeford, there we go, over to you, Assistant Director.
Thank you very much, Chair. I won't dwell too much on introduction for this particular report, hopefully it's fairly self-explanatory. The report is seeking approval to enter into the contract arrangement for the Berkshire Sensory Consortium Services for a period of three years. I'm sure members will notice that the periods for which the contract was starting was 2021, and it's unfortunate that there have been a number of delays in this arrangement coming forward for approval, some of which have come through the nature of the shared services arrangement which is in place, which leads to this particular contract, which we're also seeking to regularise, hence the delegated authority to myself to seek to ensure that we get a joint working arrangement in place to pick up on this particular arrangement at the moment, whereas at the moment we just have an informal shared service. Otherwise, this is a statutory service, we are required from the Children and Families Act not only have this service in place, but to manage it on a regional basis. Originally, there was a slight error in understanding of contract responsibility when we first set up Brighter Futures for Children, so this contract was in effect novated to them. It's become apparent through the latest round of review of this particular contract that that is something that the council cannot discharge, in that we must be the people, the organisation that signs the contract, hence this report coming forward this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Director. Councillor McEwan?
Thank you, Chair. I will be quite brief, just to repeat that the report highlights that the council must carry out planning and commissioning services to support children and young people with send diagnosis. Happy to support the proposals, and thank you for clarifying issues concerned, and happy to support the proposals as detailed in the report.
Thank you, councillor McEwan. Any other indications? No? Okay, we'll move to the vote. Those in favour? Unanimous again. Thank you, Assistant Director, thank you all. Moves us to item nine, information management strategy. Over to Mike Graham.
Thank you, Leader. I'd like to present the Information Management Strategy and Action Plan, which officers have prepared to coordinate better use of data across the council. This report and the strategy and action plan outlines how the council wants to use data as an asset. The first step is to have better organisation around existing data sets, and how they are gathered, used, stored and deleted when they are end of life. Members will see from the action plan that there's a large degree of compliance and risk management addressed first, about keeping our records in order and meeting our compliance requirements. However, we're also planning ahead to the point where better organised data allows efficiencies and better services to be delivered in the future. This strategy is therefore enabling and is relevant to the corporate plan foundations of customers first, digital transformation, getting the best value, collaborating with others. Through the action plan, officers in the information governance team and the records management unit will guide and support services to have the right building blocks in place. There will be an extended information champions network across the council to promote best practice and monitor implementation. The information governance board will focus on the strategic issues and responding to the risks. The strategy and action plan will be kept up to date via the Policy Committee, but quarterly updates on progress will be made to the Audit and Governance Committee. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr Graham, councillor McEwan?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, officers, I'd like to thank officers for the report. And there's obviously a lot of information included in the report, and very interesting information about the data and how it's gathered and stored and will be stored and deleted. I'd just like to touch on the area around cyber security, which obviously remains a priority for officers, and indeed for all staff, with new threats being presented each week, and just to note that cyber training will be included as part of induction for all new members.
Thank you, councillor McEwan. Obviously, very important thing that we've brought before us, I mean, information governance remains a considerable issue of national attention, I think. Any other comments? Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Chair. Just to say that we will be supporting the recommended action on this. Information management is key to the future in terms of the services we provide. Good to see that training is in there, I mean, even so many years after GDPR came into effect, there is still a lot of confusion in the workplace as to how data should be managed in accordance with GDPR, so good to see that training is being provided on that school. Thank you.
Thank councillor Robinson. And councillor Robinson. Anybody else? No. Let's move to the vote on the recommended action. Those in favour? Unanimous again. Wonderful. Thank you very much. And thank you to Mike. Let's move to item ten, the Q three performance and monitoring report and some West Midlands tones now.
Thank you, Leader. This is the latest quarterly report detailing the council's financial and performance monitoring for the twenty one twenty two financial year. In December, I presented the quarter two report to Policy Committee. And at that point, we identified eight point one million of service pressures and proposed to deliver an overall breakeven position through the use of COVID nineteen grants, corporate contingencies and the use of one point eight million of the two point seven million of reserves that were approved as part of the twenty one twenty two budget planning process. I'm happy to now report at Q three that service pressures have reduced slightly to just under eight million and that the overall position is now an underspend of two hundred and seventy four K and that there is no longer any need to call on the reserve that was earmarked to balance the budget for this current year. The H R eight underspend is now two point three million and the combined capital underspend is now in excess of sixty one million pounds. We're now on track to deliver more than eleven million pounds worth of savings this financial year. Performance against the corporate plan measures is set out in section ten of the report. Policy Committee is asked to note this position and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr Carter. Councillor McEwen.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to officers for this very detailed report. I'll note that the out term projection is going in the right direction in relation to the quarter two. And so nothing else to add and I'm happy to note the report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McEwen. Any other indication? Councillor Mitchell.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to Darren for this comprehensive report. Reflects very much what was said in the budget and the midterm strategy. All I would draw attention to is that the fact that the overspend on services this particular financial year has been funded through, as it says, a combination of COVID nineteen support and contingencies. And the report clearly states that that is not sustainable in the medium to longer term. So I just would like to ask the general question of the director that it's good to hear we have improvements ongoing. But how will we be addressing the fact that that element of government funding simply won't be there next year?
I'll come back to you at the end, as is the usual procedure. Councillor White.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, obviously, it's great that we have neutralised the eight million pounds worth of overspend, but that is a concern going forward, especially looking at the amount of savings that the council is managing to deliver. The report said that I think thirty percent are on track, no, thirty percent have been delivered, twenty five percent are on track and the rest are at various levels of risk of not being delivered. So we're looking at maybe fifty five percent of savings delivered. I remember being briefed on this a little while ago and the amount of savings the council was able to implement was going down and down and down. And maybe it's bounced up again this year, but it's nowhere near the eighty percent it was at one point. The other thing that caught my eye was the outstanding debt of one point three million pounds to Homes for Reading. Not necessarily the debt itself, but the comment below that discussions were ongoing with Homes for Reading regarding their repayment plan created a red flag that they were struggling to meet or they may be struggling to meet their repayments, which is of course a big concern, given that it's one point three million pounds that they owe to the council. So yeah, those were the things that caught my eye. Nothing further to add, Chair.
Thank you, councillor White. I mean, as you'd expect, of course, your savings become more difficult to deliver over time. And that's why we always put within the budget a sizable, well appropriately sizable contingency sum to mitigate against any savings that can't be met. And obviously quite right and proper that we would set aspirational stretch savings targets, but acknowledge the fact that we won't be able in any given year to meet all of those. And that's sensible prudent budgeting and has allowed us to avoid savage frontline cuts as have been required in so many other councils around the country. Very pleased, very proud actually of the way that we have managed the finances of this authority over the previous few years. If I go back to the director of finance?
Yes, so the you are right to point out the service pressures that we've got for the current financial year. The biggest elements of the pressures that we've got in adult social care and health services relates to the non-delivery of these savings for the current year. You'll be aware that as part of the budget planning for twenty two twenty three financial year, we corrected that and the budget for that service area has been increased for next financial year to remove the impact of the non-delivery of the savings. So in terms of that part of the service overspend, it has been corrected for next financial year. In terms of the impact of COVID nineteen on income levels, yes, it remains a risk for us. We have re-profiled the level of income mainly in dens as part of the twenty two twenty three budget planning. And we know that central government funding to protect councils against the impact of that is due to end at the end of March, so there's unlikely to be any ongoing government support into next financial year. Of course, what we aren't able to state at the moment is how quickly income levels are going to recover now that a lot of the COVID nineteen restrictions have been removed. So that will clearly be a significant part of the budget monitoring process in terms of twenty two twenty three financial year. And councillor White is also correct. We have identified in the report and I am currently in discussions with Homes for Reading about the repayment profile. The first repayment is due to happen within the next month. So it's not that they aren't in a position to repay any of the outstanding debt, but I am in conversation with them about the timing of future debt repayments. And again, I'll report the outcome of that back to Policy Committee in due course.
Thank you. Chief Exec. Better this way though, isn't it? Isn't it better this way? There we go. Okay.
Just in terms of the long term sustainability, I think quite a few of the savings which haven't been achieved this year that were budgeted to be achieved were around income and trading, which clearly is much harder in COVID than we thought it was when we first set the targets two or three years ago for some of those savings. And what we've done is readjusted them and taken them out for the future M T F S. And hopefully that will make the budget more secure. The two major drivers of the budget gap in year two and three of the M T F S are the first is the government not giving us a three year government grant figure. And so the government has been threatening every year for a few years that they're going to do a major reset of business rates and public subsidy to local authorities. And a big hint in the settlement this year that that was seen as part of the levelling up process and that they would do that reset next year. But we don't know the rules of the reset. So will there be some protection for a couple of years? Sometimes caps and collars have been put in to try and transition authorities through those changes. And therefore, we've taken a pessimistic view of what that change could be and put it all in year two of the M T F S. So it will be interesting to see how that emerges later in the year. The second major issue for us is the capital programme and capital investment and how much capital receipts will be able to have, whether we can make revenue contributions and develop a contributions to it. And the capital programme in of itself generates a significant revenue pressure in year two, three and four and five going forward. And we're doing a detailed review at an officer level of the capital programme, which we'll be bringing back to members in June to look at how quickly can we commission this work? And it may be that we need to slow down a bit on commissioning the work if we're still very unclear about government funding and our overall position. So that's sort of two major issues which we have to deal with. The third is we are just launching corporately at an officer level a big efficiency review to look post-COVID at the ability of the council to reduce its cost base. Now, there's a lot of headwinds in the budget in the opposite direction. And clearly, some of the international situation around cost of fuel and the inflation that is emerging into our budgets are headwinds that we are walking into. But we're starting almost a year earlier than doing the budget, looking to see whether or not we will be able to make the organisation a bit more efficient to try and deal with some of these pressures and then be able to release some of the capital programme as a result. So just sort of be worth laying out, you know, the active steps that we are taking to try and deal with the issues the council has rightly identified.
Thank you, Chief Exec. It sort of reminds me, I suppose, to repeat my fairly familiar refrain, but actually a familiar refrain of leaders of councils up and down the country, independent of what party they belong to, which is the very most important thing that we could be provided with from central government is not necessarily more funding, although of course that would be very pleasant, but some financial certainty in a multi-year finance settlement as used to be the norm. But in fact, it's been now, I think, at least four or five years since we had more than a single year's finance settlement. And it does make life unnecessarily difficult. It would allow us to much better plan what we will be doing over the medium term period if we had that multi-year funding settlement. And like I say, every leader up and down the country would ask for the same thing. We're very good at working within the budget envelope, within the funding envelope that is provided to us. But it is very frustrating indeed when the goalposts move every single year. And to have a bit of certainty would allow us to make the best of that platform of stability that we've built up here in Reading. Anyway, nothing further on that. So let's move to the vote on noting the report. Everybody in favour? Unanimous. Good. I should hope so. It's a noting report. Wonderful. Let's move on to item eleven. We move into the section where we're behaving as the sole member for brighter futures for children, not behaving as such, we are. So we've got the brighter futures business plan and I'll go to Kate Graeford first and then to Deborah Glassbrook.
Thank you very much, Leader. Yes, as you say, this is the annual report that comes to Policy Committee acting as sole member for brighter futures to review and agree the business plan for brighter futures. I'm just going to comment on a couple of the more financial matters before passing over to Deborah Glassbrook. So in the first instance, as the report confirms, everything that you have set out within the business plan and the finances associated with it are all in line with the budget as approved by a previous policy committee and council on the twenty third of February. One point to note is since writing the report, the overspend situation from a brighter futures point of view has been reduced significantly. So the period ten report showed pressures still remaining of two hundred thousand, but that has improved significantly since earlier in the year, therefore increasing confidence that brighter futures will come in within the contract sum for this financial year as well. Otherwise, I will hand over to Deborah to go through the plan, which obviously is key in supporting corporate plan objectives around thriving communities. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening, councillors. So this three year business plan with our one year detailed plan further develops our vision in brighter futures for children of protecting and enhancing the lives of children and young people in Reading and to support families to find sustainable solutions to enable children to have happy, healthy and successful lives. We are refocusing on prevention with our mission of providing earlier prevention resulting in less intervention. And we intend to take this approach at all levels of service delivery. And indeed, this approach is incorporated into our four key priorities. With priority one, looking at how we will actually manage the demand for services. Priority two, thinking about effective early help services. Priority three, delivering a sustainable children's social care service which is rooted in relational and earlier statutory engagement with families. And priority four, using our expertise to influence and support education settings. And in order to achieve those four things, what we want to do is to build further on enablers. The first enabler looking at focusing on building a stable workforce of permanent staff, improving the quality and ways of working and making full use of our finances and resources. As detailed in page four, we have a number of significant achievements and are proud of these. However, we are not at all complacent and know that there are many challenges. Indeed, COVID nineteen and the impact of that on children, children being disenfranchised from school, an increase in demand for mental health services and the increase in families in crises and those experiencing domestic abuse, just to name but a few. We will continue with our ambition to unlock the resources in Reading by working in partnership with families, with colleagues in the council, with colleagues in other organisations and with our communities. We believe that all this is set out in our business plan will be achievable by working collaboratively in a trauma-informed way and with all the tools at our disposal. We are aspirational for the children and young people of Reading and I trust that our business plan provides evidence of what and how we will support children to thrive and have brighter futures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks to the Assistant Director. Thank you to the Exec Director of Children's Services as well. Councillor Terry.
Thank you, Chair. Colleagues know that I spoke well and passionately about the progress that has been made by brighter futures in making sure that our children are safe and well and thriving. And I'm sure my colleague councillor Pearce will add something about education. So I don't intend to say very much more this evening. Obviously, to thank our colleagues over in brighter futures for the work that they've been doing. And just to note that whilst things have been progressing well, we should always remember that there's always more to do. This is a difficult and demanding area of service and we just need to remember that in the future. And we still suspect that the impact of COVID will still be coming through. And as I said, council, we're very pleased that we're investing in services to support the recovery of children during this very difficult time. And that's all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Terry. Point really well made. I mean, we focused a lot on the effects of the past two years in terms of adult social care or the reduction in income in the council, but to think about the effects of that biennium on children is something else entirely. And I think will have some very long run effects and particularly for children at the younger age, at the younger end of the age spectrum as well. Councillor Pearce.
Thanks, Chair. Like councillor Terry, I won't regurgitate all of the achievements we did at full council last week. But just on the education side, a couple of, or three things that was very pleasing in the business plan that reflect what good forward-thinking, modern education settings are doing were the constant reference to collaboration and co-production. We can't do anything without our schools being on board. The focus on preventative measures and early intervention, and again, from government-led things, there tends to be a top heavy focus on funding of, you know, I'm a secondary, especially sixth form teacher, but by that stage, if there's a gap, it's not going to be closed. So the focus on early intervention is very welcome. And the fact across the business plan, everything is being referred to as evidence informed, which is, which is great. We all have our pet projects and think they work, but unless we've got evidence to back it up, that's not really of any use. So it's very good reading and welcome the plan.
Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to the officers of brighter futures for children for a great report. I do love reading these reports every year. This one is so well positioned in terms of it's not only aspirational, ambitious, but it's achievable in many ways. The way that it's written, linking the priorities with the key themes and showing the enablers is very good. And yep, certainly from our side, we more than welcome this report and we'll certainly give it our full backing. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. No other indications. Exec Director, anything you wanted to come back on?
No, thank you.
Wonderful. Assistant Director? Up on the magic box. No, that's a shake of the head. That'll do. Up on the magic box. No, that's a shake of the head. That'll do. Vote on the recommended action then. Those in favour? Unanimous. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Moves us on to item 12. The Brighter Futures for Children reserved matters. Kate Grafer.
Thank you very much Leader. Yeah, so again, another report coming to policy as sole member for brighter futures. Within the Articles of Association for the company, policy acting in its role as sole member is to approve any employment of proposed offer to any executive director. And following the departure of Mr Harbord last year and obviously we have Mr Carter acting as interim executive director of finance for brighter futures at the moment. There has been a full and complete recruitment process for permanent replacement. The final interview for which was conducted last Monday and unanimously, sorry, get my teeth in in a second. Unanimously agreed the appointment of Kit Lam, which is to be endorsed through this report to policy.
Thank you very much. Councillor Terry.
Thank you Chair. Obviously, we'd like to give our thanks to Mr Carter for the support that he's provided to Brighter Futures for Children in the interim. Thank you for that. And to just the recommended committee that you accept the appointment of Kit Lam. It was a full process. I think Mr Mitchell will agree that we agreed that this is a good candidate. So ask the committee to agree the recommendation.
Thank you councillor Terry. Everybody agreed with that? Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Unanimous. There we go. What an evening of unanimity. That moves us to the end of the public part of the agenda. So if I move the required motion as printed, item 13 on the agenda paper.